Okay, it is 6:01 PM. I am going to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, September 8th. Please, as we start, let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance and follow it by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, a moment of silence, we think about those who have volunteered for us. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Allen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Here.
And Trustee Klein, I believe, is in route. Also, with present is Attorney Gildes.
All right, thank you. Few announcements. First off, village elections will be held on Tuesday, a week from today, September 15th, from noon to 9:00 PM. As a reminder, due to COVID-19 and subsequent executive orders, the village election was previously scheduled for March, it was postponed. There's been no change with who is running. Vanessa and Craig are the ones whose seats are up, as well as Ben stepping out, and Deb Alter is the third running, so there's basically three seats open, three people running. The election time is open from noon to 9:00 PM at the municipal building. We will be following all New York State guidance regarding social distancing for elections, including specific information from the Board of Elections. The quick version of that is that masks are required. Social distancing will be maintained by workers and people who come in will have sanitizer presence. And again, voting is open from noon to 9:00 in the municipal building. Another reminder, we did this last month, but we want to just restate it so we get used to the system. The zoning board and planning board have designated the last Tuesday of each month to be regularly scheduled meetings if one is needed. The ZBA meeting would be 6:00 PM and the planning board at 7:00 PM. And we are still looking for one additional member for the planning board. Before I have updates, I know Mary Ann Zwickelbauer from Huesick Rising had wanted to speak to the board about the purchase of the Christmas trees. Mary Ann?
So, we had a meeting last night to talk briefly about this, and we actually have gone through the dissect and what has been done in the last two years. So, what we came up with, and I put it down so that you can really see the questions that need to be answered. So, basically, we need to organize ourselves a bit and trying to problem solve some of the problems we had in the last two years. Huesick Rising has always thought that the trees on the streets in the downtown area was made to beautify downtown for the Christmas season. And why we do that and why that's important is because small businesses in downtown and elsewhere in Huesick survive the entire winter based on what they're making in the month of December. Making the downtown area inviting to families interesting to walk around and not just jump in and out of your car and run into one store. You can walk around and see how pretty it is, allows them to visit more than one business, and makes things interesting and family friendly. So, we had some questions that really can't be resolved by Huesick Rising because this has always really been a village project. And even though we have helped facilitate it, particularly last year, if we want to change it at all or organize it at all, we need some questions answered. The first and most important question would be, and actually relates to the last question. Should the trees be lived into the historic district? We had three or four businesses outside of the historic district, down the side streets where trees would never be seen, asked for trees last year. So, if businesses that aren't in the historic district, business district, get a tree automatically because they're, quote, "a business in the village", then we're talking about multiplying the number of trees that are, we're getting. Multiplying the number of barrels, it's $55 a barrel. So, the cost of a tree and a barrel is about $80. Does it benefit the beautification of downtown to be doing that, is the question? And does the village want to extend the budget? And then we'd have to consider facilitating that because I'm not sure we can handle that, that number of trees that that could be and the number of different locations that that could be in. We just don't have manpower to do that. At the end of the day, last year, I started the morning at 8:30 and we ended at 5:30. And I drove home at 5:30 saying, you know, I'm 60 years old, what am I doing? Hauling barrels and gravel around and in trees. And it was great, we had 12 people come out, it was a long day. So, in the, in fact, that goes to number four. What are the roles of the village, Huesick Rising, and the village's Iowa department? How could we make that easier for everybody involved? Could the barrels be out ahead of time on the streets so that we weren't also moving the barrels? That much, that would help shorten the day and the grunt work of the whole project. They're getting more volunteers would also be something we could do that we're already working on. Should we start over? Should we start over with a new message to the community about why we are doing this to downtown? And why it's important to decorate the streets of downtown for the village, for the businesses, for the continued existence in the village? And could this be done with some press release of sorts saying, you know, this is why we're doing it, this is important to all of us if we want businesses to stay downtown? And maybe we could get even more people to participate as far as... We had trees last year that went undecorated. So, I would start all, one of the proposals is to start all over again, asking people whether or not they want a tree, whether or not they're permitted to decorate the tree. Not just, do you think because you pay taxes, you have a right to get a tree? Are you decorating a tree or are you decorating by, you know, Small Business Saturday? Don't feel obligated, it's not a problem if you're not. Because we have these other people to adopt trees. Businesses from outside of town, farms who do business outside of town, there are other people who would be willing to adopt a tree down there. We had a tree, some of the trees that went undecorated last year, either myself or Kevin O'Malley, out of pocket spent to decorate for them. Huesick's never stepped up to a plate, they have new leadership. They don't, they don't care when they have them. So, therefore, maybe it doesn't go way back and the property next to their picnic table. Maybe it serves the beautification of downtown better by being on the street and being adopted by somebody else. They may still have a tree out front, but they wouldn't be obligated to decorate it if they don't want to. And it would look better on the sidewalk. So, that's another decision that we would like the board to make. And I think that's about it.
The last one, move all the trees to the park?
That is, move all the trees to the park was a solution to people not decorating the trees, the number of trees getting out of control, and the ease of having them all planted. Then they could be adopted by whoever wanted them, but they would all be in the park. They would all be able to be lived. There are a number of people who do not like that idea. We floated that idea by numerous people and they really want to see the trees on the street. So, that's a last option, but it's not popular. It's been done in other communities, it's pretty cool, but it's a different, it's a different mindset and a different, serves a different purpose than having trees in front of the store.
Part of the issue too is that a lot of light poles don't have plugs. So, in a lot of cases, Huesick Rising and the village bought batteries for their lights. You know, nobody maintains those lights, the lights go out before Christmas comes and they don't look as good as they did when they were first put out there.
And the businesses who were given those lights didn't save them even from year to year. And it cost Huesick Rising $12 a strand the first year. Over $240 for lights that the businesses basically threw out or lost.
And part of the problem is that part of the, some of the buildings are empty on Church Street, so you have sporadically nothing down on that end by the Great Wall and the Senior Center and up, and then you have a whole bunch here and then a whole bunch there. It's not consistent, but I, we've been talking, Neil and I, for a couple of years to look at buying each pole a cost of almost $200.
He's lost them.
He's over there somewhere?
He's out.
The only thing is if you spread them out too far, like people who, you know, are on the edges of the village or whatever, not that they shouldn't have a tree, but when you put them closer together and keep them in the historic district, you see, you see, it becomes, it looks like it's more than there is. You know, like when I shoot a TV show and everybody punched together, so it looks like we have a huge audience, it's a good time. It looks nicer when you're drawing a tree.
So, historically in the past, how have these trees been put up? Has it always been Huesick Rising, has it been a combination of businesses and village?
Two years ago, we offered to assist putting the trees out. We were interested in getting them out earlier because the previous year they weren't put out until the December. So, the businesses really wanted them out earlier. In the end, I don't think we got them out even with our assistance. And we froze in the open garage back here for two days straight putting trees and barrels because that was the method that was used. They were all done here, and then they were put on a flatbed, and then they were brought around through the village, and then gravel was added to it. Last year, when we were asked to do the entire process, we don't have, we don't own the equipment to be able to have done it that way. Plus, I'm not sure we had two or three days of, two or three dedicated to doing it in that manner. So, we tried to get the barrels out and then put the trees in them and then during the call of drum around gravel and had the gravel to all the barrels after that. And with 12 volunteers, that was an holiday project, but it was done in our village. Then, you know, there were, Kevin and I both went around and asked people to decorate trees that didn't. We have an email list of everybody who gets a tree. We notify them when they're coming, we ask them to have them decorated by a certain time, just politely, hey, you're decorating a tree, it would be great if it were decorated by Thanksgiving. And they went out Saturday before Thanksgiving last year. But our thought is, you know, every, every town in America is decorated by Thanksgiving. You can't drive anywhere in this country and not see it decorated by Thanksgiving. We also now have more businesses downtown than we've had in a really long time, so I think it's really good. But that looks really good, and that we pull people from the village and all of them out.
What prevents the village from putting out the barrels and setting up the trees in cooperation with Huesick Rising, anything?
I'm not sure, I think just not having an organization plan ahead of time, I think is probably what, is probably the biggest thing.
I think, to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, the village can contribute, the manpower and the staffing and the grunt work to have the village look good for the holidays. I think that's a no-brainer, to have the Iowa department help you out and do what you need done, let us know for sure, and we can ask Neil, and he just walked in.
There he is. I agree, I agree with that. I think, I think taking extra time to organize things ahead of time is always going to work. I think, do you have a list of businesses who did not decorate last year?
Yes.
And are these businesses that said they would do it?
Yes, so Collins Insurance decorated the week before Christmas, and I went in and asked her twice. And Huesick's didn't want to have anything to do with it. Reading Well even after she requested a tree from the village, and she, she sought out the village to get a tree. Didn't want to decorate it, thought we were going to do it for her. And then she didn't decorate it anyway. And it also wasn't on the sidewalk.
And are, do you, how many trees did you say you thought would, businesses would want outside the historic district part of the village?
Well, there were four who asked last year that were outside of the downtown area property. And, I mean, Ball Street Extension, we basically did a Christmas tree in the front yard. And it's just, I find it hard.
Who's out there?
Or Jeezy?
Say again.
Yeah, and now dogs usually generally are using the orange now, but they don't wear it out of the loose now.
So, it's quite unique. I kind of like the idea of the village providing the help and the resources. I personally would like not to be involved in deciding where trees go and who gets them. And that, I think the village doesn't need to be necessarily decide where who gets a tree or who doesn't. And if Huesick Rising can do that, then we don't have to discriminate amongst the villages, the businesses in the village. I think it's a weird position for us to be and tell one business, they do, we go and get a tree. I prefer to not be involved in that decision-making process.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think that's why when a taxpayer calls and they have them on the business, they get a tree.
There's three or four outside where their business is at. What's the, what are my trees?
Right. So, that's why if we were changing it to just be the historic district, I would start with an article and a page that described why we put trees in the historic district.
Just my...
I think we need to firm commitment on it.
And then maybe we're going to say, buddy, that, you know...
And we tell people, don't commit if you can't do it, and that's okay.
Because otherwise, you just put lame trees and people try and go.
Do you, do you have a list of businesses outside the village who would be interested in sponsoring a spot if there were businesses within the village who wouldn't?
Well, I know that Spark Farm did it last year, Brown Stormy Company did it last year. There were independent individuals who wanted to pay Huesick Rising to decorate. And that isn't what we had actually thought the project was, but that could be done.
Do we, do they get like a sign on the tree like this provided by or something like that?
Well, it's in memory of, in the one case, it was in memory of, and I believe Kevin took care of the tree.
I don't think Brown's gonna take one of those, right?
Yeah, it's not hard to decorate, they were empty cans and all the trees were, like, for business.
I think this sounds like about three or four of us can just get together one evening to iron out the details. I think Neil should be involved, one or two of us should be involved, obviously you should be involved. And I think that if we can get a firm commitment from businesses with the express understanding that if, if you can't commit, that's okay, you don't have to do it.
Right.
It's better to not commit than to commit and not do it, right?
But don't ask for a tree if you're not going to decorate it.
Right.
That's, that's, you know, that's like throwing money into the wind, it's crazy.
Well, and also, you know, the things that are going to stick out are the trees that aren't taken care of.
Right.
It takes away from everything else that is done right, so, all right. When, what's the date? Well, we can, I think if we set up a meeting in the next couple of weeks in some evening to discuss this, I think that would really be easy to facilitate this and get things organized and get dates and so on and so forth. Is that, is that something you'd be interested in?
That's super, because we really need to start working on that.
Trustees, anybody want to hop in on that?
I will.
Okay, I will as well?
Hi, Ken, because I'm going to go to Christmas downtown, Christmas time.
Awesome, okay.
I'll help facilitate things through the office because I've worked in it before.
Okay. That's, well, I mean, if Emily and Vanessa are there and Marie wants to help facilitate? Yeah, that's great. And we'll have to make sure Neil is there, and he'll do all of the work all the time. So, yeah, we'll, we'll...
That's, that's, I'm going to get Jerry in a community service, but I can also...
There is no community service?
Yeah, there is a community service, we can rely on that right now.
That's something that actually we're going to be working on shortly because I had a nice conversation with Jerry about that and spoken with, I think I shot an email to Andy about further discussion, that, that's something that could be if it's going on at that point, but there's a couple hurdles we have to get through to get to that point. What's that?
Seniors are going to need their credits?
That's also true.
I mean, and it's totally socially distant.
Yep.
And it's outside.
Yeah. All right. Seniors at the school will need community service.
Who's at school, kids owning their stuff that they want to do things to?
Yeah, we actually have contacted the school before, it's, it's tough. I mean, I know they all need volunteer hours, but...
It's a hard season to get it to.
I think that it's a great concept, but putting it to fruition might be a little bit of trouble.
Especially this year.
I don't think it's something we can count on.
All right. So, so we will, Mary Ann, we will get an email out, probably by the end of this week, looking for a date to set up for Vanessa, Emily, Marie, myself, Neil, Mary Ann. And that's great, and we'll get the details hashed out. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Two, I have two updates, one here, one I'll just do myself. The first update is, I, in terms of the proposed chicken law, as you recall, a couple of meetings ago or last meeting, it was a couple of meetings ago, we, we decided to get together with three trustees. It was Bobby and Vanessa and myself, along with a few citizens who really wanted to pursue getting a chicken law passed in the village as a way of doing it the right way, focused on people who've done it before. What are the things that most people are afraid or worried about if there were to be chickens kept in the village? We went through a bunch of local laws, came up with what we thought were a pretty good list of regulations. We got a document, I got the document put together, sent out to Andy to review and the committee to do some fine tuning. And I have a schedule of how I see this going forward. But the basic gist is, after the group reviews it, and Andy tightens up some of the language, then I want to sit down with Andy and Mark, who's our code enforcement building inspector, to talk through it as well and get his vantage point on it and possibly come up with edits from that. With the idea of, in the October meeting, presenting the local law, setting the public hearing for that local law, which would likely be the November meeting, if we choose to do that. And that would be a spot where we would get the information out, we'd get it out to the village. They could contact us, come to meetings, talk. I know when I first got on, everything was all about the water, and I remember saying, I just want to get back to the point where we can talk about things like chicken laws. And here we are. So, so, yeah, so that's coming, and I just wanted to highlight that. Saying next meeting, we'll likely be presenting a possible chicken law for everybody. And at that meeting, I'm hoping also that a couple of people who are on the committee can present on the chicken law and explain it, explain what it is and what it isn't. Because I think one of the things I learned when talking with people was there were a lot of preconceived notions about chicken laws and what are the legitimate concerns versus what are things that aren't concerns. And we, I think we did a really good job of avoiding, making sure that the things that would be the most concerning are not part of the law, so that's coming.
We're also not reinventing the wheel, we're going off of existing chicken laws in other communities in the state.
Yeah, we reviewed a whole bunch and took what, and then sort of made it fit what we think is the right thing for our setting here, so that's coming. Number two, I just want to say, myself, I have been bogged down by a lot of things, and it's been a very hard month. I'm finally digging myself out, but I still have a lot of voicemails I need to respond to, emails I need to respond to, letters I need to respond to. So, I'm just telling the board, telling the community that I am sorry that I have fallen behind. I am getting caught up. I've gotten a lot of things set up to make sure I'm on top of that. And hopefully, next meeting, I'll be able to come back and say, I'm caught up, especially now that the school year has started. So, that's it for mayor updates. Now, we are going to move to the people to be heard section. As always, as a reminder, we have these meetings recorded and available online or by request. And when you do speak, we just ask that you say your name and address before you start. Could I have an idea on how many people would like to speak tonight? One? Okay. Take it away, please.
My name is Tricia Peters, 29th Center Street. I came in for the last meeting and you were going to look into some things. I've told you five times and left a message, and I have another attorney.
I was under the impression the chief had spoken with you?
No.
Since the last meeting, the chief didn't speak with you?
No. He sent us an email saying that's, I thought he did.
Yeah, I was also under the impression. Well, first off, my apologies for not getting back to you, I thought it had been resolved. You had brought up a couple of concerns. So, you didn't speak to the chief at all after the past meeting? All right. Well, I have reviewed the incident and the documents regarding the situation that happened at Tops. I can set up a time to call you in an evening this week, if that is what you would like.
Can you request, do a FOIL request?
I mean, you can do a FOIL request.
I did, it was denied, I appealed, it was denied.
Who did you do the FOIL request with?
The county.
Oh, that's right. You told us this last time, the FOIL request from the county.
I believe that you or the chief of police was involved?
What is it that you would need to have foiled?
I want to know if there was a 911 call.
Would you have made the call or someone else have made the call? Would you have made the call or someone else would have made the call?
The guy who has, he made the call.
That's the only way the police would come, to the 911 call.
Yeah.
The only way the police would come is when the 911 call was made. They don't just go to Tops for the sake of being at Tops.
Did, did you call the police?
No, the other guy did.
So, then there was a 911 call made? So then there was a nine one one call made?
He, he said he called, but his response was after he said, he said it would be right over. That leads me to believe that he called the police instead of nine one one.
Well, if he calls seven six five one, that goes to nine one one anyway. If he calls the village police, that goes right to the nine one six.
But if he called the police, the second officer, he had his private number.
Then he's still responding as an officer. I mean, the chief stated that the officer responded to a reported auto accident, so it was a reported incident.
This is, this is what chief asked that to, uh, and I don't know why it only mailed to you, but on August sixteenth.
Andy, is this something we can share in open meeting? I don't wanna violate anything we're not supposed to.
Who was sent, did what come?
It was sent from the chief, uh, anyone sent?
Who sent to me?
Yeah, me, Rob, and Kevin.
Yeah, that, that, that does constitute an intra-agency communication, but there is a FOIL exemption for that. You can certainly assert that waiver, you know, you can generally discuss the incident, but certainly if I was not reading the internal.
Okay.
Didn't he bill his final report on the, on the matter?
Uh, I do not know.
Hang on.
But again, that may not be something we can share based on. Well, here's the bottom line.
Yeah, I think they just put him into, uh, the chief.
Okay. I can give you a call this Thursday evening or Friday evening?
Thursday morning.
Thursday evening or Friday evening?
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday, what time?
Uh, anytime from three to seven.
Okay. We'll call.
Patty, can I take your number, just so I have it here for the mayor?
I think I actually have it.
Do you have it? Okay. Thank you.
Um.
I'm not, I, I can't, I thought the chief was here, but he.
He has an incident.
Yeah, he's tied up.
Case he's on right now.
He did a full, full police report, what he sent him.
Said between three and seven, alright?
Yes.
Okay, we got a call. Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Uh, Woodsburg.
Yes.
Uh, plans for that before winter, or you want any further words about?
Uh, which part, is it the one in the village with the, the demo of the buildings?
Yeah.
Everything was put on hold with COVID. Um, there were, there was one. We, I have to follow up with Neil about if we're gonna be able to demo now, but I don't even know if we can do demo now because I think we have to have made decisions on every single property before we can do the demo, as per the contract with the state.
The acquisitions are completed, it's moved to demolition. You do, you should follow up the state on that. There is still one contract outstanding waiting to close on the property. Uh, there's another contract that's been entered into, but there's a, um, that real property tax issue that we're still trying to work through.
Yup.
So there, there's a couple of contracts still out there and, you know, the village will follow up, the state is trying to further extend that project due to the COVID delay.
Is the property that Mark flagged on Main Street, is that one of the ones?
That's right.
Yeah.
That is the one.
That's the one.
Yeah.
Cause that, that was, I saw it, I, I think it's a hazard at all.
It, it, it's a difficult issue because we're right on the border of having a potentially unsafe building, where there's certain demolition costs that the village would incur outside of the Woodsburg grant program.
Yeah.
But there is the ability, if we close and use grant funds to demolish it, that it works for both the village and the county, and serves as that, but we met with the county and we're trying to work through that back.
Yeah.
Well, once it is closed, that, that should be the first one taken care of.
Absolutely, and there'll be a special extra thing we have to pay attention because it's so close to the Woodsburg Culver, it goes underneath the street. But it, it shouldn't be an issue, just something you have to be aware of when the demo happens. Um, but to your point, uh, that's something we need to revisit, cause everything kind of stopped with COVID. And if, uh, if something's gonna happen, it has to be figured out now, for, cause the season is, is gonna be ending. And that is assuming it can happen, because we've had some situations where a lot of work in the spring, early summer was delayed, which backlogged all of the other work and, yeah. Alright, um, okay, on to reports. Uh, you guys have copies of the reports in front of you, um, treasures reports, Ben?
Same thing I say every month, keep spending to a minimum, especially in light of the economy, uh, and no, no world going there, so.
True that. Alright, unless we have questions, looking for motion to approve the treasure report? Thank you Craig, thank you Bobby, all in favor? Opposed? Carries? Um, police report, chief again is not here, it's had a case come up. Um, Bobby, do you wanna highlight anything in the chief's, uh?
Yeah, for August, there was a hundred and twenty eight calls, ironically the same as July, you know, twenty eight calls. Year to date calls for twenty twenty are a thousand and ninety one. And the arrests in the month, there was eight arrests, there was contempt of court, traffic, and DWI, assault, resisting arrest, contempt arrests, disorderly conduct, journalists, conspiracy, and graffiti. And the graffiti was underneath the, the River Street Bridge down on, by the freeway. And, uh, our high superintendent has cameras on and we were able to make an arrest from the pictures on the cameras. So it's very useful, we have those cameras down there, appreciate that Neil, cause without that, we never would have had anybody in, uh. Hopefully to be down there cleaning it up. There was three, three minors and one, one person over eighteen.
I heard from somebody that, uh, committed community service for those, it's a four individuals, three, four?
It was four, I think, was what Bobby said.
Fifteen hours of community service doesn't seem like it's enough, fifteen per person? Is it not for what they did, but?
Can we do a community build cover?
What's that a community build?
A mural under there, covered it?
Actually, so, somebody contacted me just recently after that happened, she's the one told me, she wanted to do a mural of, uh, LeBron Jones' picture on it.
Yeah, something under there, cause we have paint anyways, they just mopped it back, where he, oh, where he has got.
Oh, that would be awesome. Absolutely.
The fifteen hours per person was correct or not, but it certainly doesn't seem like it was enough.
Yeah, seemed.
I would determine for them to, I guess they had to write a letter of apology as well, but, um, who'd they write the letter to?
I don't know, and that's.
City of New York?
That one's out of, uh, ours, cause that's the judicial, judicial side of things, but, um, hmm. Can always find out, I'll ask.
That certainly doesn't seem like it justifies the crime.
I'm actually surprised that, that case would have been seen already.
Yes.
Because, um, that's, just because courts only opened up somewhat recently, but they have been going on a pretty, um, often schedule.
It's, it's secondhand, it's not for the.
Okay. I'll find out, I'll find out. Uh, alright, anything else Bobby, wanna highlight?
No, I, I did.
Unless we have any questions, looking for a motion to approve the police report?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you Ben, thank you Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I wanted to, about the police, uh, I don't know how long, last month there was an issue with, uh, posting on Facebook on the police site, it was, I don't know, it was politically sensitive, but it was very sensitive and enough people really were outraged about getting posted on the village page. And, uh, it was taken down after it was realized, but it was on there for quite some time, it was on there for five hours or more before it was actually taken down. I don't think we have some kind of policy on who posts or who has, who has access to that, I don't know if anybody knows except for the police department. I think we should have some kind of a policy on who has access, maybe the village board member or the mayor should have access to that as well, so. If this happens, hopefully it won't happen again, but.
I think this is, uh, this is wise to, to look into a social media policy and I think if we do it right, it's gonna extend patches to police, it's gonna extend to anything. Um, which may lead to changing some things that work fine, but, you know, if, if we as employees of the village are posting things on our own personal Facebook page, that may need to be changed, which is unfortunate, because some people do that probably fine and it's great and it's positive and it makes the village look good, but, um, I, I think you're right, that we need to review that and have a very specific policy.
I think it should be used for police business only, I know a lot of postings and it might feel bad that officers and all even do it, but they post that kind of stuff and I think it takes away from the local bent of the page itself and we keep posting those, uh, deaths all across the country, so there's.
And, um, yeah, and the other layer of this is, um, the fact that on social media, uh, even though it's the, the police's Facebook page, um, I don't think we have, I think there are issues with censoring things. I know that when we, when I took the post down, I, I have screenshots, so if there was ever something that came up, we have that archive, so we have that. Um, but it wasn't appropriate thing to have up there. Um, and I think that, that's part of the problem with the police Facebook page and we've talked about that and we've seen that in other, uh, areas.
I think it'd be more appropriate if the police wanted to do things like that, is have a police PBA website. If they, their union decides they wanna do, post that kind of thing, they can do that.
Alright, uh, yep, Andy, that'll be something we follow up on, we'll start working on the social media page.
I said, doing, you know, a couple of examples of different communities, villages actually that have social media policies on them.
Yeah, I think we do it, somebody do the chicken lawn review, what's already out there, see what we like and.
Yeah.
Bring it to the board for approval.
This gets difficult, Bobby, because once you have that kind of social media page, you're a public entity. That, uh, of course I've said it's a, a functional equivalent of someone saying something on the street or on the sidewalk, public place. And they have every right to protest, to say what they want in a public space. That's what these web pages, Facebook is, that's what they become, and when you allow people to comment, it's very difficult in terms of taking them down, you have to have a clear policy, but even then, it's.
What am I talking about, what I'm talking about, what are we supposed to do on our page, not so much the public?
That's, there's, there's a couple of components to social media policy. One is what your individual public officials, employees can place on the official public page and quite frankly also on their personal pages, cause they're, they are public officials. And the second part is, if you do allow comments, what's gonna be your policy in terms of allowing those comments to remain and taken down?
It is, it's quite a challenge.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's really difficult. There have been several federal court cases where people have challenged taking down a counter based on constitutional grounds, First Amendment, free speech.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
Something to work on, but.
Something to work on, definitely, thank you Kevin for bringing that up. Alright, code enforcer report, Mark?
Uh, who should be in there is, uh, we can do one. I did finish the transfer of the twenty twenty, probably means goal, and to my day, I suspect that's the question. And that's the code that I use the most. And then from here on, I'll be probably as I went into things and I need to use the code from another book if I need to, uh, send a violation, then I'll, that's a little long, probably means, that, that question.
Mark, you have in here, uh, three properties that you're requesting the village board to take action on. Um, what kind of action are you looking for us to do and Andy, what can we do?
Well, you have a canister property that's been, you know, you have to make decisions about doing it. That property continues to sit there and rock, um, nothing, just nothing, there's none of it. And, uh, there's, you know, there's buildings inside of it, uh, there's a foundation wall that's collapsing, uh, that's effectively a rupture inside the house, it's collapsing out the wall, it's got the, uh, rupture panel. Um, so that's the one that was given to the village, uh, two or three years ago. Uh, yeah, the barn on Elm Street, nothing's changed there, I think it's already collapsed anyway. I, I was thought that maybe it's time to admit it, it was in the process, that might be a good one for them to practice on. But I would, I would probably come to the chairman, that one's a much smaller project and, um.
One center?
One center, right?
Well, one center, yeah, we're all over one center. You know, I'm just putting it out there, like, you know, hey, not much I do about it, you know, one center is what it is, it is a county home. We know that it went to foreclosure, uh, that held the process up, we were trying to take it, taxes, and then the owner went into foreclosure, which held everything up and last I heard of it, it was still in that process.
So it's still stuck in foreclosure?
As far as I know, I have never, I'm not pretty that, or even.
Is that one center street? Yeah, it's in bankruptcy right now, or bankruptcy.
So could we even do anything?
Well, once you go into bankruptcy, there's an automatic stay and to get a relief from that, then you can go to the bankruptcy court and ask for what the state neglected, so it's not like, I mean, the relevant parties have done it, so it's just sitting.
And it's been allowed for almost a year now.
If you can get to bankruptcy court.
I think the person that's left the area too was involved, right?
Hmm, and with the courts all stopping for a while.
They did stop for several months.
Yeah, and further delayed. And forty eight classic? Foundation wall collapse?
Oh, oh, that's, uh, General Collins.
Is that?
No, it's not General Collins. Oh, that's.
That's Kat-.
Third street, or on the, uh, sidewalk, right?
Like Katana's.
That's Katania.
That's been around forever.
Okay.
I did some searching on that one, he doesn't, he's not living at the address that he previously looked at. I don't know where he went, but also checked the obituaries, but he wasn't on there either. But I, I just, I just kind of assumed he's at the nursing home because there's no forwarding address for him.
And I know we had an attorney that he had that we were, uh, working with, but they're, they're no longer connected. That was like a year or two ago, we discovered that.
And, uh, we were working directly with him and that's earlier, foundation, because he was a consumer project and.
Yeah.
He did not have counsel that.
The number that he gave, the village and, uh, some other people is no longer in existence, so.
I, I think we reached the point there, where I had that in the I could and we needed to make the next job, you know, we were again, uh, probably, you know, whether it was, whatever, but I think it's a safety issue, although the state doesn't seem to be too concerned with it.
And that's the other issue, it's, it's.
A follow up letter to, to the.
I, I did do that, I, I think the last time we discussed it, you asked me to do that, which I did, and we were still, I don't know, there was no response at all.
Alright. It's the empty lots in between the, um, the new, um, restaurant and the insurance place.
Use of steel, that's on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Forty eight.
Yeah.
Exactly, if someone is interested in purchasing that lot and they, they can't get a whole.
Uh. It's, it's, it's so interesting how all these things are stuck and we're kind of powerless to really move on.
I'm not sure if you realize how many, but I think there's another lot in between, it's three, I mean, it's three blocks.
Yeah, and I think a fourth one down low.
Uh, possibly, um, but I know like the one near the restaurant, uh, the next one where the issue is, and then the next one.
Hmm, okay.
So even if, if you couldn't find something like that and you wanted to do, kind of, you know, name or something, the process would quite take forever.
You gotta still track down the property owners, serve them if they don't. Even at the village, well, it's the first step in combination, in order to say the village wants to take it, hold the public hearing, you're a village, right? You gotta put the property or, uh, some notice.
Yup.
Didn't, didn't you have American House and that was never responded or?
What was that, Deb?
With the, that's what happened with the American House.
That was.
That never responded, they could get, try and.
That was before my time, so I remember that came down.
I have that too, it was, it was history.
Right, but then he was given a chance and it never responded, so.
That was the county, the county tore the building down.
Yeah, okay, but I think that's because the county ended up getting stuck with the building, yeah, okay. Alright, thank you, Mark. Um, clerk, oh, we, no, we didn't approve it yet, I'm looking for motion to approve the code enforcement clerk.
Motion.
Thank you Bobby, thank you. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. I think that was Emily. All in favor? Opposed? Checked it off too early. Clerk, deputy clerk reports. Anything needs to be highlighted?
Same thing. We've been working on billing. The utility bills and payments coming in, pretty much our usual death certificates, birth certificates.
I will, I will tell you that we're, we're having a weird computer issue in the office again with one of the programs. And our tech guy has been on it, has not figured it out yet. It was just with one of the computers. And now it's with, it sounds like it's with two of the computers, but one of the computers works fine with it, so.
I can work in it. I just can't close a journal, but I can do everything else.
So quirky. So I don't know if it's a software thing or a server thing or a workstation thing. But if it continues to be fluky, we may end up pulling the trigger to get a new server. Because it's, it's been a sort of an on again, off again concern. And with money tight, I don't want to pull the trigger unless we have to, but we have to. I mean, we do have backups in place. We have that system that's been going on for several, for a long time now. But it is something I just want to have on people's radars. Unless you guys have questions for Marie, looking for motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Vanessa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Thank you. Highway, D P W reports. Bobby.
Neil, there may be money.
I love an opening statement. Mine's just been going on as usual in the rain.
And it's true. It's true. I know that the milling and paving had been scheduled and then it got rescheduled, then it got rescheduled again. Does this sound like the right dates now?
No. No, the pavers are like, but we don't discuss.
The, the pavers, you said?
Yes, the paving, I even asked them, it's like eleven. Because by the end of this week, you could change their dates again next week.
Okay. So we're still tentatively scheduled for.
Sure we can connect them on these two teams, but so this, uh, good change.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like driving around.
What were those streets being paved?
Neil, I did have one question on your report regarding the waiting the airbags and fuel companies that are going to pay the bill and return this and dumping gas into our diesel tank. You mean, I can't believe there even, there's a question.
They.
We didn't know that, Andy.
They paid for, they took the, the, the old out. They put the new in. They made us even with that. We didn't have to do any work for that. So the question now simply is, are they going to pay the repair bills for the equipment that we had? Which agreed is kind of a no brainer, but have we heard, have you reached out to them recently?
Uh, it's been a brief break. I was going to visit fire.
Add that to my list to follow up on.
The last time I got from them was they're working on it.
Do, do we need to have our, where do we tell them instead?
We did look at that. Neil, that's under a state contract, right?
Yes.
There's some, is there some language in particular state contract?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Say normal.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just was baffled when I saw that was the question about whether they pay the bills or not. If you go to the gas station and you phone diesel into your van, that's, I understand, you know, change my view of what they do. It's, I think it seems like it's a hundred percent their fault.
Can you go over the streets for Craig again? What's, where's, I know it's that, that one spot at Abbott?
Abbott Street begins, hopefully that'll take care of it all. Up and Hill there for a while. And then we're coming down to Willow, down around the forest or to Allen. We're skipping a section in between Allen and Center. Did we leave some drainage in there before we, we paved that section and put water down on people's property and stuff like that? So then we're opening up and doing two sections on Upper Forest. Two sections that are really bad and then one section on Blue's Exeter.
All right. Any other questions for Neil? I know you guys have been crazy busy. Summer help still with us or are they off back to their own?
One finished up last week and I still have the other.
Okay.
You said what, probably can you add another month? You said, no, you thought of.
Uh, it's Carter's, is it? Was I right?
Yeah.
Uh. We do have a little bit of money from another incident, so we might be keeping it, uh, maybe things good.
Okay, all that's fine.
That would be great. As long as we stay within the budget, yep.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Looking for a motion to approve? Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Thank you. Uh, sewer report, we do not have one for today. So we will get, next report will have both months. Apologies for that. He's on vacation right now. And the water reports. Anything you want to highlight, Emily?
Um, I haven't heard anything from Jim, so I'm assuming all as well.
The, um, one thing that I, I want the board to note in the report is that Robert Flores of Delaware did inspect the Rogers Avenue storage tank, which is leaking and has been slowly leaking for a long time. That is going to need attention. And the reason we had Robert Flores look into that is because we're actively seeking out a grant to make either repair or use the property there to put a brand new tank on it, because that may actually end up being cheaper.
You spent a lot of money on that back four or five years ago on that.
Yes. They did some sort of repair that lasted for, I want to say roughly about the warranties. Uh, as with most things we buy today, but yes, um, I don't, yeah, that was before my time. But I know early on, that was when we started to know that it was leaking again. Wasn't very bad back then, but I think it's, it's going to require some, some attention in the near future.
Are we still on the water restriction?
You know, I asked that question to Jim.
There's no, no sales of water since May, so, and I knew that for June, July, August that we, no rules or nothing like that.
From my knowledge, we still are.
I think we still are too. I know we did have some good rain in there, but I know how, how much we needed it and.
We did ten.
Yeah.
At least, we didn't get that.
Yeah. Um, we've had some. We, we kept getting these huge like forecasts and then it would just miss us and go everywhere else. That happened a couple of times. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Boy, we could have used some of that and they could have used less, yeah. All right, um, looking for motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Minutes. Anything needs to be adjusted on the minutes from the August eleventh regular meeting?
I'm in the motion. Do you shuffle Mr. Bennett?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Ben. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Thank you. Uh, committee trustee reports. Kevin.
Last week we went down to Andy's offices and we talked about the parking law, which Andy had already sent a draft to you and I. I'm sure the full board has seen it yet.
I just sent it out today, so it's in your email.
So hopefully we get that on the agenda for next month and get it rolling.
That would be great. I gave it a quick look through. I had one or two questions, but I'll throw those out in email. But for the most part, a lot of good work put into that. Yes, sir, in the back. Oh, absolutely.
I'll send you one. Oh, you got it.
I'll just do it right now.
Yeah, that defines where the parking lots are and everything. Is that missing or are we keeping it made?
It's vague, so they can tell to a lot of different parking issues in the village.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't find. Yeah, the way it's set up is that it will apply to all village own or operator, or municipal parking lots.
I just have one other question I'm asking now, you know, same with the, uh, unregistered vehicles, uh, A T Vs, anything like that. It's not the, I read the definition of a vehicle and some things aren't vehicles that, you know, an A T V or anything like that. But it's not specifically spelled out in the law.
I think, I think, yeah, I think in the law itself, you came up with, we talked about that, about having unregistered parking vehicles and parking lots.
I, I just, I, I have read the reference. I'm going to think about it.
Well, shoot those comments over. You certainly want to be timed out. Right now it's proposed that only vehicles, and that's the limited definition of vehicle, uh, registered in a state with unlimited New York, we'd rely on it anywhere. Only registered vehicles are allowed to park in municipal lots. So no unreg, unregistered vehicle would be allowed to.
That's what I was looking for and I didn't see.
We'll, we'll make sure, we'll double check, but that was the effect though, making sure there's no unregistered vehicles sitting in the lot.
And that's, and that's kind of an issue with parking lots or, uh, unregistered cars, cars.
Yes.
They've been sitting there for, for weeks at a time.
Yes.
And also.
And boats?
Would that include boats?
I said, does that include boats?
Freezers.
There, there's a boat part, um, classes in, in the parking lot.
It's not going to be, that's, that's registered and it probably logs to a person's space in the old school.
Right. So that's legal.
Is that, is that, is that, is that our village parking lot, Neil?
Is a boat considered a vehicle?
No, it's a good question. We need to look at that.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll look at that. We'll make sure that language is built in.
Is it your parking on the street in Montel Alto?
Uh, that's why it's generalized, the law itself, so you can tailor it to each parking lot. The parking lot where you park, a lot of people park in that, doesn't give you spots, so it'll be signed for that saying parking for, it doesn't give you spots only, otherwise they need a ticket. Whereas the parking lot down on the riverfront, it would be four spots for two up parked and so not allowed by, by tenants. So some of the partners would be leaving the cars abandoned for a long period.
You know, you know, on Johnson Street, there are people who park for days sometimes.
Living on Johnson Street, he's got two up parked and signed already.
Call the police on that every time, please. Flood the police.
Crossing the line where there are issues of people parking for a long time.
Yep, yep. All right. Anything else, Kevin? That's great. Thank you. Hopefully we have two local laws present, which means we have public hearings back to back. Bobby?
Um, just, I know you already told me the agenda, excuse me, regarding the L D C, um, on the, the trash cans.
You know.
We took it off.
No, we took it off because. We got it figured out.
Okay, yeah. So just so you know, like, like you touched base with the L D C, gave you a check. Unfortunately, it was made out to the company who were buying the trash cans from and we couldn't use our village tax exempt form if, unless we were the one paying the bill. So we, we have, they gave us an open account so we can, we placed the order already for the trash cans. They're being delivered to the highway garage. I provided Neil's contact information, so when they're delivered, they'll be here to unload them. And here, they're generating a new check made out to the village of Luke Falls. So that issue has been resolved.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you to the L D C.
Then your second last report? Because you had your last reports in, in March.
I'm all, I'm all set. I'm all set.
All right. Thanks. Emily?
Um, I think the swamp will be a problem. I'm still learning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's a little bit of a process, but Penny and I know I'm great. And Greenway, I still have to catch up with Brian. We haven't really had time, the two of us.
School, yeah.
And it's a lot, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a lot, so.
Yep. All right. Great. Thank you. Vanessa? Craig? All right. All right. Old business. Uh, we are now at the point where we need to sit down and make decisions on this for next year. So I'm looking for a trustee or two who wants to hop in on this and to take a deep dive into what we charge for at the transfer station compared to what it costs to get, uh, taken care of, look at the procedures on power handling tickets and pay all that stuff. So are there any trustees who want to hop into that beautiful, beautiful quagmire of regulations and costs? Come on with that sale. No one's jumping at it.
I think we should look not only at that, but also at, look at what Erxwama does for us and whether.
Worth it?
It's worth it for them for what they do.
Agreed. All right.
Yeah, I, I, we, also, that's on the, that, wasn't that still on the, did we take?
Yes.
The service agreement, Erxwama's.
You want to hop in on that?
I mean, it's still a little bit over my head. I'm not going to lie, I mean.
Well, that's how we learn.
Yeah.
I would, when I, when I was on, when I was on the board.
Matt's always said he'd come down and speak at board meetings.
Okay.
You know, I'm sure Emily could reach out to him if you guys decide what.
That may be worth hopping next meeting.
Yeah, he's, he's never been shy about.
Can you throw that in as a note, possibly having Matt come at the next meeting? That would be good.
Yeah, Kevin said he would help look into it.
Thank you. Do you also want to look into it?
Yes.
All right.
I need to look.
Beautiful. Thank you, guys. Okay, uh, in that case, then I'm looking for the continuing motion to table it.
Motion table.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Bobby, for the discussion. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Thank you. But that's good. All right, on to new business. We already did this, so that is done. Uh, discussion regarding a Verizon, I don't even know how to say the other company letter here. Um, we got a, a letter and an email from um, a representative of Verizon about this and I spoke, I got it, I think I got it to you guys yesterday or today, or I think Marie sent it out to you guys actually. Um, and Andy, we talked about this on the phone earlier. It sounds like it's related to the peddler license.
Yes. So it's like, I mean, all the, whatever equipment lines are already in and installed, correct? That work is done. So this is how we reached the same line, basically go door to door and try to get subscribers. Yeah, but that, that, that does come, it does fall within the definition of peddler under your local law. They're not selling goods, but they're taking orders to supplement or provide a bigger service. That's exactly what they'd be doing. So they need to have them to comply for and receive a peddler license.
So this came in an email, uh, from a Verizon rep and they specifically said, um, if, if you could let us know when you resume the peddler license, that would be great.
Right now, we're not doing that, correct?
No, we did for, um.
No, the ice cream, you know, they.
We did for, yeah, we did for the ice cream.
Uh, we got, we got postcards in the mail that had actually happened, saying that you're now eligible for bio services.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I, I've had my own personal frustrations with them because I called three different times uh, and got three different answers on what exactly was happening and where. The first one was, oh, it's coming, it'll be ready in a couple of weeks. The second one was, I don't think it's actually going to be in your area. And the third one is, it's going to be, but not for a while. And the final result was, it's two houses down from you, but isn't accessible at my spot. I didn't do all the village. I can't get a map on where they did it.
I think we should send a letter. This was funded by the state of New York to enhance, uh, rural broadband and they really just came through the village only because they need to go through the village to get somewhere else. So they came through, they did basically, as far as I know, High Street, Main Street, uh, the streets up Mike's, Griffin, Rogers, Park Avenue, they did those and then they went out the whole road.
I know they did not do Mansell Street, Saratoga, Albany.
They didn't do the, they didn't do the, uh.
No, because if you go down onto High Street, two houses.
I mean, although the law has said, I don't think.
Right. And I don't know if that's because Spectrum already had it and they're not allowed to. I don't know if there's agreements that work that way.
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so either.
I talked to one of the reps from Verizon when he was on the job and he said, you really should, uh, say something about getting the rest of the village done.
Why don't we invite a person from Verizon to come here and talk about that?
Right, I think.
Yeah, he wants to.
You're front of the stage. Before we make this. Like, how do you tie that?
Sounds good to me. Put that.
Eighty percent, eighty percent house in Silver River, that's how it looks like.
We'll put that out on Facebook that we're bringing Verizon rep. We'll see how many people come here. There'll be like hundreds armed with tomatoes.
Need a motion to table that until the representative comes and, uh.
Not really, it was just a discussion.
I don't think we need a motion, it was just discussion, but I. I don't think we need a motion, it's just discussion, but I will uh, I will follow up with that, with that letter and request.
Yeah, that's good to invite him here, but just understanding that for federal peddlers law, the application is made to.
Go to the rate, right.
Administered.
Yep.